Hey, everybody ready? Looks fine. Okay, welcome to the Village of Wapinawas Monthly Meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Trustees for April 13, 2023. 7:00 PM, actually 7:08. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to our republic, which stands in devotion to God, in this law, in liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. I'd like a moment of silence for Mike Ruffin's father, who just passed away, and a two-year anniversary for longtime Village resident Don Mazzaki. Thank you. Roll call clerk.
Mayor Serino.
Present.
Trustee Sadadi.
Here.
Trustee Telleseck.
Present.
Trustee Neznik.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Yes.
Trustee Ruffin.
Here.
Trustee Laura Sella.
Absent.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor. Action on minutes March 9th and March 30th.
Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make it. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, regular session. As requested by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wapinawas Falls on March 30th last month, the several associates have obtained additional contractor bids for the execution of the biochar pilot program at Wapinawas Lake and Greens Pond. You already had a bid from ISN Solutions. You have two other bids, Princeton Hydro, $39,000 fixed price. That was obtained on April 7th. You have Solitude Lake Management at $59,685 fixed price. That was also obtained April 7th. And you had Larry Sprague of ISN Solutions at $70,000. So tonight, you can select one contingent on village attorney's review of the contract.
I'd like to make a motion to select Princeton Hydro for $39,000.
I'll second that move.
Continue upon the contract.
Motion by trustee Huber, seconded by trustee Sadadi. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, both aye. Okay, now, that motion was contingent on village attorney's review of their contract.
We haven't received the full proposal yet, but I understand that it's forthcoming. I did talk to Raoul Berno, who's the engineer in Bow.
Hi, Craig. Yeah, Raoul Berno with the pasture associates. Yeah, I have the contract from Princeton Hydro. I did send it to Craig, you know, pile of stuff. Once you're back, we can talk about the specifics and how to get actual beautiful contracts. But it will take a matter of a couple of days. Their contract was very, their proposal, excuse me, was very complete based on the contract with partners that Craig and Laurie came up with. So it's essentially 95% broken up.
Okay.
So I'll, sorry, Craig.
Thank you.
Yeah, if it meets approval, then I'll have the mayor sign it.
Yeah, so I estimate probably a little bit of a signature file.
Good job.
Thanks, Lord. Thank you. Thank you, Raoul.
Board, we are in receipt of a letter from Community Service asking for support for them to, they're requesting monies from CDBG program, and they would like the village's support in obtaining that grant. They are going to be doing repairs, quite a few repairs over DeMarco 1 and DeMarco 2. So a resolution that they prepared for tonight. Resolution Supporting Community Services Program Incorporated Submitting a Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, CARES Funding Application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal. Whereas the Community Services Program Incorporated is seeking funding for its DeMarco Place and DeMarco Place 2 senior citizens complexes. And whereas, Community Services Program Incorporated has requested the support of the Village Board of the Village of Wapinawas Falls in their submission of a Community Development Block Grant, CARES Funding Application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wapinawas Falls hereby supports Community Services Programs Incorporated in their submission of a CDBG grant, CARES Funding Application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal. And be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to submit a letter of support of Community Services Programs Incorporated, submission of a Community Development Block Grant, CARES Funding Application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal, and encourages the award of funding for their project. And I have a motion to move that resolution.
I'll make it.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Trustee Ruffin.
I'm second.
Roll call vote. Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Sadadi.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Neznik.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Telleseck.
Aye.
Trustee Laura Sella. Absent. Next on the agenda is we have a request from the Justice Court to hire three part-time court clerks.
I'd like to table this until the executive session. I have a matter I should talk about.
Okay, is that a motion to table?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Harriet, it'll be tabled to the executive session. Approval to hire police officer, part-time, the village police department, Gerain. Last name is Gerain.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second.
I'll give it a second.
Who was that?
That's Michael.
We have a motion, or we have another request for approval for another police officer, part-time. Last name Gonzalez.
I'll make that motion.
Give it a second.
Who was that? All in favor?
Aye.
On both of them. Aye.
Harriet. Mayor, do you want to discuss coordination of neighboring townships?
Well, I've spoken to both supervisors, one from the town of Poughkeepsie and one from the town of Wapinawas, on perhaps a need for an intermunicipal agreement for when we need, on an emergency basis, a building inspector or a fire inspector, or if we got massively hit by a snowstorm and we needed extra help. And so I've had a favorable response from one of the supervisors, and the other one hasn't got back to me yet. But I think it would be something worthwhile to pursue. And so I'm actually asking the board if they would have any, no objection if I start some discussion with both supervisors.
I'll make a motion to continue the dialogue with the supervisors.
That's town of Poughkeepsie, town of Wapinawas?
Yes.
Yeah, I would second it. That way, it, in case we do have a storm or anything like that, that you have some contingency in place. Absolutely. It's a great idea.
You second that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Who did the, who did the motion?
Trustee Sadadi.
Oh, pass.
Trustee Sadadi moved that, seconded by trustee Ruffin.
Thank you.
Next, there's a discussion about expanding the village to the county to be able to go out to the entire county for a water board member by waiving the residency requirement.
This originally started out, and it's, the wording will be different, but what we're looking, we have a full complement of water board members now. This would be for a, a alternate on the water board. And we'll revisit this. I need to get the specific wording and to find out if it's legal by the attorney. So we'll revisit this the end of the month at a workshop.
Okay.
We talk about it now, or?
Oh, well, we can.
I have an opinion on it, in my opinion, and I think there's a couple other people's opinion on it. I feel that this person, the person that if you want to put on, shall have, be a building owner and a water user in this village.
Well, we both share that opinion.
Right, because I think if you, if you found somebody in Red Hook, you're giving them the right to our water, to do whatever. You can have three or four people out of town, and they'd be in charge of our water. I think there should be a village person who owns a building and has water usage in this village, not just?
Well, this-
Anybody outside of the village and has nothing to do with the village.
Well, this particular person is in a neighboring town, but he's a business owner, knows water, and he's an engineer.
And he's a water user.
And he's a water user.
I'd have no problem with that. It's just a non-water user, a non-
Right.
Serving owner.
I'm on board with that.
So it will then remain for the attorney, who has just diligently listened to what we just said, to see if that can fit the bill, and we can name him as a water board alternate, since we have, we have a full complement of board members.
Yes, Mayor, I know that we had proposed some legislation for the board's consideration, and I, we can revisit that legislation. I know that you had, that the board, there was talk from the board about adding a couple of members. Are we going to still keep three members and two alternates? Is that composition going to change in any bit?
At present time, one alternate is what we're looking for.
We, we don't have any, we have two alternates at the moment that, as per our legislation. But do we, have, have those filled at the moment?
No, just one is.
What?
I think he's a board member now.
Right. What happened at the organization, there was a member who served his three-year term and ended his term and did not get reappointed. And so an alternate, we filled the seat with a new member for the three-year term, the board did.
Yes, okay, it's coming back.
And then the alternate got bumped up to a water board member for a one-year term. And that's where we're at.
Okay.
So we used our one alternate that we had.
So-
So we, we're looking to move with one new alternate, just in case he could sit, sit in and vote if one of the three board members was absent.
Got it.
Not for two, one, at the present time. So that's, that's what you have to do to determine if that scenario fits the bill. That's all.
So Mayor, would this be at the workshop? You'd like some proposed-
Yeah.
Legislation? Okay.
All right. Monthly updates or leaks?
Well, right now, we're just really concentrating on the budget, but the one thing I'm going to mention is the black box is currently at the entrance of the boathouse, so it's down there on Market Street, and it'll, we've had a lot of success with that. So that's where it's monitoring right now, and we'll get some feedback on it in a few And for those of you who don't know what that is, basically, it takes down information about times of day, how fast people are going, if people are speeding through the area, and it gives back a lot of information based on, kind of like having a cop sitting there, but he's not really sitting there. So we've been getting a lot of good information off some spots there. Right now, it's at the end of Market Street.
So now somebody's doing something wrong, go after them?
Um, no, I don't, no, no, it's just collecting information. So we used it right up here on Franklin Street, just to give you an example, and, you know, we had some complaints that people were just speeding through, speeding through, speeding through, and after we sat it there for quite some time, we noticed that, you know, it wasn't really, you know, there was maybe one or two people, and it was certain times of day, so we're able to pinpoint it into those exact times, but it's not going to issue you tickets or anything like that.
It's on the camera. I just put my nose in it.
We will tell you how fast somebody's going and what time of day. So when you look at the data and you say, whoa, between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock, we had 13 people going 50 miles an hour, that's when we really need to position an officer there. That would be what is really, the real strength of the black box.
Did someone want to comment on finance, since trustee Laura Sella isn't here?
Nothing to really say, right now.
Our treasurer, Andrew Foreman, has been working extremely diligently on the budget, and unfortunately, it looks like we're going to be talking about budget issues very, probably next meeting, workshop meeting.
Oh, no, we'll be discussing-
Yeah, a lot.
Issues.
In about 15.
Into executive-
Well, because there's personnel issues tied into the budget issues.
Well, you'll have to wait. I'm sorry, no spoilers tonight.
Right. And with that said, we're in the process, this is the worst month for the village to work because it's budget month, and because we have to adopt a new budget by the end of the month. And we tabled the motions, set a tentative budget, because we had, we thought we were going to have two board members meet, uh, absent, and we have had a couple of members uncomfortable with voting on it, because we needed some more information. So that will be at the special meeting on next Wednesday. The tentative budget for the next year, which starts June 1st, will be announced, and then we'll have the next 10 days to do what we attempt to do to get the best, most responsible budget that we can do. And then we'll have another meeting at the end of the month to adopt the budget. That should be a separate meeting from the workshop, usually adopting the budget and the other budgets, which will be the garbage budget, because that's a user fee, the water budget, and sewer budget. That meeting should be separate from the workshop, so it might be after the 20- It really shouldn't be separate meeting. But we'll, we'll determine if that's, we're going to follow that policy or another policy, because we may need the extra day or so with this budget. But there will be a special meeting next Wednesday for the purposes of adopting a tentative
All right. Highway, trustee Sadadi.
So we had a safety issue out on East Main Street with a parking spot outside of Goring Hall. It's been, it's been resolved, and the, that space that was encroached onto the crosswalk has been stripped off to make safer for pedestrians. Also wanted to thank the highway department for their job when they cleaned up for the St. Patrick's Day parade, did a nice job getting the village ready to go and cleaning up afterwards. And business as usual after that. They've been working since the Blacktop Plant's opened, doing some Blacktop pothole repairs, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Fire and Lake, trustee Huber.
Yes, there were 15 fire calls for the month of March, and for the people out in TV land, the people here, next Friday, SW Johnson selling a break here 150th, so you might see fireworks. It's from us. We're having, it's just a members-only party, but there'll be fireworks on the lake. In Lake, we are in the process of doing this biochar pilot program, program for weeds and sediment. And we're looking to do, might, we're trying to find a place, but I think we found a place to put the biochar socks. It'll be on the Spring Street by the dock, it'll be on the right-hand side of the dock, because there's a, a water inlet that comes into the lake from storm drains that feed our lake. So we're going to see if we can figure out something for all the weeds. It won't be, it won't be a dredging thing, but it will be something we can do, something to leave, I guess. So we're going to see how that works. That's going to take most of the summer, by the end of August, I think it was, where we pull in the socks and see what it did.
All right.
You're saying for members only, for fireworks?
Well, the firehouse turns 150th, 150th on April 22nd. That's the day it was organized. So we're having a birthday party at the firehouse, but for, for members only. But we're-
The fireworks will be on the lake.
Fireworks down the lake for everybody, but it'd be, we're doing it because of our
All right, safety. We have come a long way with the safety committee in the last couple of years, and we just completed our last safety violation by fixing a door in the basement of the police station, so it has a crash bar now. If you want to get out in a hurry, you can get out. You don't have to wait and unlock the key, find the key and unlock the door, you can go out. There are a couple of issues left over at Monsieur Homestead, or other than that, it's going to be just routine safety inspections on a monthly basis throughout the municipal buildings. Recreation, trustee Telleseck.
We had Easter egg hunts this past Saturday, despite not the best of weather, we had a very good turnout. In conjunction with the PBA, we had, kids had a really good time, very good turnout. And presently, we are working on the summer concert schedule, looking at four concerts over the course of the summer, starting in July going through early September. That's it.
Water board meeting was held Monday. It's usually the Monday before the board meeting at 3:00 PM. Recently, we've been having them in this room instead of at the water treatment plant when, and that was more or less so that there's a little bit more room than in the conference room, restoring COVID. We just figured it, this was better. So we had that meeting, and we're moving forward, we're getting closer to figure out the filtration plant that will, that will have to be installed for, to take out the manganese and iron in the water. And we're working to resolve a five-property water problem. It's, the water problem is a little unique, because the service line runs, it's a long service line. Normally, you would have your water line come in from the front of the house, and then the water department puts the curb control on the inside of your sidewalk on your property, and then the homeowner takes the rest of the line to their house. Well, it appears that in 1915 to 1920, when they were putting water in for homes, this one section of the five properties, the whole front yard's was solid rock. So they ran, they took a line off of the main and ran the service line behind the house, and then they picked up four of the houses, and then another house that was on a side street that that line also continued, and they tied in to that house. Well, there's a leak on this line that's over 100 years old, and we're trying to get it resolved with the property owners, and it's been very, it's been ongoing, and I think we're seeing some daylight where they will attempt to resolve it, because we can't work on private property, meaning the water department and whatever. And so they'll have to accept the fact that maybe this will be a shared cost to repair this line amongst the five property owners. The other solution is, is to terminate and disconnect the line, and then they would have to have all new service, and they'd have to pay for it themselves, except for what the village would provide from the main line into their property. And so we at least are talking now, and so it looks like we have some kind of game plan going on there.
Okay, thank you. Personnel, trustee Neznik.
Nothing much other than the hiring of some part-timers to fill some positions that we've done tonight.
Sure. Okay, so as mayor, I, I take the water committee, and I take the sewer committee, and our sewer plant is located off of Sheaf Road down on the river. It's, it's down off of, probably off Delavern, a half, maybe a half a mile down on the left, there's a sign there that says Tri-Municipal, and the plant is on the, on the river. It's been in operation since 1987. And so I'll just say it again, I always say it every month, there's going to be some big work being done down there, $11, $12 million worth of work. I don't know when it's going to start, but our, the village is share is going to be $4 million bucks. And so anybody who wants, and I'll invite the board members to take a trip down there and see the plant, and just get a feel for how this all comes. It, it's quite interesting how- It, it, it's quite interesting how it, from the village here, uh, everything gets down to the sewer plant down off of, uh, the river. So let me know if you want to take a visit there.
All right, mayor, that concludes the printed portion of tonight's agenda. Did you have anything else or did you?
Yeah. Well, we'll, we will go into executive session, uh, but we will have budget meetings. So my thought is outside of, uh, the chairs of the committee, uh, interviewing their, you know, like the police, uh, and the committee might want, will have the police commissioner to go over the budget and then they'll do what they think they might have to do to shave the budget a little bit. Uh, I think the board should have at least three or four regular meetings, uh, held in this room to go over, uh, the budget. Now, the public is invited, can come, but you can't talk. You can listen. And, but I do think we should have four budget meetings because this is a challenging budget. They all are, but I think this one is a little bit more challenging, uh, than normal. Or maybe you want to just start with three and, you know, we could have them from.
Do you want to start before or after next Wednesday?
Uh, well, I was thinking we could have maybe if, if we can get a majority of the board members to attend, uh, like six to eight o'clock at night or five to seven, at least, I mean, I have to, I, I don't want to keep them late because I know we have two members of the board who get up at three o'clock in the morning to go to work, sometimes earlier. So if they could be five to seven.
What days are you, are you?
Well, I would do, I would, I would say.
Like, uh, Jen asked, are we, you're looking to do before Wednesday?
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday.
I'm glad Monday, Tuesday. We can do that. I think it, I think it.
I think we're going to need to schedule something Monday regardless. We should really start there.
Would I be able to teleconference? And I have some business in Florida, family business to take care of. I can teleconference and.
Okay. And then we determine what's the best time. I know, John, you were a little later than normal.
Six would be better for me.
Okay. Six to eight?
Six to eight?
Um, that's good.
All right, let's do it.
For the most part.
Okay. Six to eight on the 18th and 19th?
Yes. The only reason why I say let's pick some dates is because John will advertise the meetings. So.
Yep.
So, okay, so.
When's the next two?
Uh, is Wednesday also six to eight or Wednesday seven?
Wednesday is six.
Wednesday is six. That's the special meeting.
It was, it was posted at seven.
Oh, seven, seven.
Okay. It's a special meeting at seven.
Seven.
I, maybe Thursday?
The same?
Thursday.
And then maybe the following Monday. I have no objection if the board wants to meet on the Friday. I won't be available.
I won't be available.
There could be a situation where we might need one right before we pass the budget, right?
Well, that would be Monday.
25th.
Well, we might, yeah, all right.
Twenty, 21st and 25th? Yeah. Six to eight? Yeah. Okay.
All right. We have the 18th, 19th, 21st, 25th, six to eight, and the 20th is seven o'clock.
Right. Special meeting. Yeah, seven.
All right. All right. I'll advertise that, get that on our website and, um, post it.
Okay, that'll be good. Anybody want to say something? Yes.
What fine properties are you talking about, like the ones which is?
They're on, uh, South Missier. And one is on Prospect. It's that section of Rock. I mean, it's, it's no secret. It's, uh, the one on Prospect is Mrs. Von Birds. The corner house right up from her is Steve Ballier. The next one, I don't know the last name of that individual. Then you have Eddie Chase and then you have Elmy. I think that adds up to five.
What's going on over down on Rock Street?
Pardon?
What's happening down on Rock Street with our water? Who is in the town of Wappinger? I'm hearing some information.
Relative to what?
And I'm set about our water bill and that we may be, um, charged outside rates after water bypasses that have been getting watered for 22 years and 30 years and 60 years, maybe charged outside rates. And I'd like to know about it.
Well, I would, I would, I think the best thing to do is to come to a water board meeting while we have full complement of the water board and the operators.
Well, we should be notified. That would be nice to be notified about it. And yes, we will attend the meeting.
Because there's a whole gambit of issues.
We'll be there.
Okay.
We'll be there.
Okay. And maybe what we will do is we will send letters to people who want to come to.
That would be the right thing to do.
Water board. At least to the people.
Brother in law.
Yeah, whose rates got affected.
These letters. Right. Even if your grandfather didn't?
Pardon?
Even if he would be grandfathered in to have the water and sewer?
Well, I would say, I, I, I just think you should come to the water board room to hear perhaps the logic for some of these people, for some of the board members. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi everybody. So good to see you again. Um, I'm Joseph. Uh, I wanted to just pass around, Brian is going to be passing around a map that we've been developing, uh, as a community of artists here in the town, in the village, excuse me. And most of us are all residents of the village and we started to realize we were all working on different projects and different presentations of art throughout the village, River Valley Art Center. I'm sure you're aware of them. Um, and they're working in collaboration with, uh, they're hosting the Artist Guild of the River Valley Art, Artist Guild as well. Um, at the same time, it seems that Monsieur Park is hosting the artists from the high school, um, on the 14th. And Zion is also hosting their tag sale. So what I, we started to realize is that we were all working on little parts and toward the same goal. And that's to really electrify village with some artists' collectives and activity. Um, in first February, I, I hosted an event at my house, um, and I brought up a number of artists from Brooklyn. And what we realized is that a lot of the people that attended were really interested in getting together and, and developing a collective of sorts for the village, um, in collaboration with a number of artists that are here, that live here. And we realized we have a huge wealth of artists, uh, within, living within the community. And we want to really work with them and give them, offer them a platform, an opportunity to sell, um, and present themselves to the public. And I thought initially we were going to be developing the unart walk. Brian and Yaya are sitting here, um, and it would stretch the whole length of West Main Street into the village toward Monsieur Park and to the River Valley Arts. However, in looking at the logistics with the sidewalk being out and one part of it and also being a, an incline, we decided that we might want to try to consolidate it. So people that are not able to walk around easily, that would be able to travel around the park and, uh, the parking lot instead. Um, we do have a number of residents and artists, um, that live around the respective park. And along with Zion, we thought we would try to give them a lot more, uh, opportunities with their tag sale and bringing people into that, um, up, uh, the street. I forget what that's called. Andrew's Street. And there are a number of artists, uh, that are going to be presented at some of the houses on patios along there. And then this is potentially the platform or the beginning of something we'd like to do maybe three times a year, um, in the village. And we just wanted to make sure that it was okay. We did speak to Zion's best tree and utilizing their parking lot. So I put together a proposal, um, that they're reviewing, of course. And they'll be using, utilizing it that day as well. Um, so we want to trust, just trying to make sure that you guys are aware that all of this is happening and that that's all logistically, you know, works with the village itself and that it's not going to cause too much of a problem. Um, we're hoping that anyone that needs to park would be using the Zion parking lot, but there will be already a breadth of people coming in that day. Um, that's the 14th of May. Um, along with that, in terms of the longer term prospectus, like we'd love to look into the potential of the, the Cobbler Building or the Cobbler House or this, uh, structure and the pavilion down below for potential music and art that would be bringing in some, some people for the area. However, the parking issue up there, we would potentially work with, um, the V F W and the public parking lot up there, the municipal parking lot to, to guide people to parking along those, in those parking lots. And I understand that that might be a little bit of a challenge for walking throughout the village, but we want to make sure that, again, we're doing this in, in alignment with what you're, you're advising. And then also just a follow up with me, um, with the art, excuse me, the beautification, um, project. I have actually, um, gone into the route of, of developing a 501(c)(3) uh, for the region uh, that would then be responsible for getting the funds necessary to help projects like small villages and towns to potentially develop beautification projects and so that the village itself or towns that cannot afford it, and you're speaking about budgets, would not be burdened with the long-term, uh, planning and maintenance of these projects. Um, so I just wanted to kind of give you guys the, the heads up about that. And I'm working with Mackie Butts and Whalen right now with it. Um, so, but we, we're, we're here representing all of the artists of the community and I hope that you're, you're on our side with it.
I just got one for you, Joe.
Yeah.
You, you were talking about having a concert in the Frendy Rees and down, down by the lake.
That is not something that I'm planning right now, but the, just what the potential of that space is.
Just gotta keep in mind that, uh, that, that'd be cool having a concert. I'd like to do it, but it'd have to be like more during the afternoon, not so much in the evening because that property borders three backyards. So it's kind of, it, it kind of falls into a residential neighborhood. It's just backyard parks. So if you did it like in early afternoon, it almost in, you know, into the evening, not late evening, but you know, maybe five, six o'clock at night or something.
With the use of the, if, if we could try to, I mean, I would love to work with you guys on setting actual absolute boundaries and schedules for the future. Um, but the, the prospects of renting that out and bringing in funding, funds for the village is that's.
Talking about.
I, I, I wasn't sure who owned the rights to that. So we would gain from that. So I know that Geneva, New York has a Linden Street. It's a, it's a street that was, is closed off by the, by the town, uh, the city, um, for first Fridays of every month. And they also close it off for special events. So like the, the Rosé Festival that brings in about 800 people to the Finger Lakes.
Yeah.
From around the Finger Lakes to that street. And, um, there's also weddings that happen right in, I'm in a venue right there. And they close that off and people pay the city or the village or the town for the use of that for closing it down for them.
We probably could work with Jen closing the parking lot down. We get the, the village police department involved.
That, that would be right. Especially if there was a function or there's, there was an event or a collective event for the, for the village. It would be nice to have that set aside.
Yeah.
In Manhattan, they close down streets all the time.
Especially this time of year, it's not so much really used because there's all street, again, there's honestly parts of them now. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Okay. We have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make it. Hope, hang on, Mrs. Roger has some.
Have this sharing the, uh, what the highway department, now to Wappinger's, now to get the seats.
You mean.
Whatever you were talking about before, sharing that, um.
An emergency situation?
Emergency situation.
Did we have any emergency situations?
No, but we have.
Actually, I think we did, but.
We had one last year.
Help us out with that tornado, microburst that came through. They were.
Well, they helped us out because our building inspector that night was on vacation. And we needed a building inspector and a fire inspector, uh, because the electric panel box was, was ripped off of, uh, at Brookside Gardens, the apartments. And the fire coroner responded to, to, uh, the apartments and they needed a building inspector and the fire inspector and we couldn't get ours out. One of Pat's kills, one lived in Hurley, New York. He couldn't get that. And so we made a call to Town of Wappinger and they supplied us with both. That was, that was a situation where then they did what they had to do. Then the people were allowed to go back into the place. So. I was saying, and the supervisor mentioned three, four, five things that that we could use this intermunicipal agreement for. And it made sense. I mentioned the building, the fire inspector.
All right. I just want to know where you were going.
In case we got overwhelmed with 40 inch snowfall, whatever, you know.
Are there any other questions? We have a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Listen to this.
We have a second.
A second.
Me.
Well, thank you. Thank you.